The time being six thirty, I call the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order. This is being recorded for everyone to know. Um, roll call, Andy Fitch.
Here.
Trish.
Here.
Linda.
Present.
Bethany.
Here.
I'm Kendall Hughes. John Thomas.
Here.
John Harville.
Here.
And Donna Licurdo.
Yeah.
Also here is Nathan. Mandola.
Mandola.
Madola. Ron Beard. And Jane Siris, our Land Use Secretary. Do you all stand for the positive allegiance? Let's look at the chief. I pledge allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief.
I can't drink to be used.
Uh, in here, we have the minutes of number four. Have you all had a chance to bring them over or do you want to wait till next meeting? Do I have a motion on the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second? Um, that would be. Linda, do you second that?
Just, and they have one question.
Okay.
Sorry, on page two, from line eighty. Um, the chairman who stated that he would prefer us to be directly with the DES representative. We also then discussed how that would happen.
Okay, so you're gonna second it and then we can discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I said, okay, sorry about that.
Now, all of those in favor, which are going to be the president of the meeting, would be Tricia, Linda, and myself. Do you say aye? Oppose? It passes unanimously with three of us. And I have two abstaining members. All right, line eighty?
Yeah, just in addition to your having said that I'm pretty specific directly with the DES representative. So we actually planned, uh, Mr. Hess informed us that the DES representative would be coming the following day and we indicated that we wanted representatives from the planning board to go on that, to, to meet with him as well as with Mr. Hess, to, you will walk through through the site. Um, so that it was, or just to say that there was an actual plan in place that we agreed to and Mr. Hess said that he would contact Ron Beard the following day and that Mr. Beard would then contact several members of the planning board. Ultimately, that ended up not happening, but that was what we all agreed to.
So, so you want to add? Uh. We'll plan to meet with the engineer and the DES on Friday for him to coordinate with Ron for the walkthrough for the planning board.
Yeah, I think it's just, but yes, please, because they'd like to see that as part of working.
Yeah. Tricia, do you have any issue with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of adding that, say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes unanimously. Any other? Changes?
Yeah.
Okay. All of those in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Aye, mention passes with two abstentions. Okay, um, public hearing on the compact zone, do I have a motion for that?
Yeah, I'd like to motion that we move that to October second.
Thank.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're gonna move the public hearing on the compact zone to October second, and that's just to move this along to ninety. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Um, and far, Mr. Gar. E far, sorry.
Um, thank you. It's not a lot of people for boundary line adjustment. Nice for coming. You know, it's actually E far channel.
E far, I'm sorry.
Do you know what it stands for?
I'm afraid I don't.
Everything happens for a reason.
Well, there you go.
Twenty, twenty years to this project, I have no idea why I'm so. I am here tonight representing the, the Alvin S. E far. And what we're, what we're really trying to do is finish out Phase One, which began in two thousand eleven. And we're trying to adjust, uh, four, I don't know, just four property lots. So we can move them kind of from where they once were in the top of the project down to the lower level. So it's, uh, Phase One had twenty-four lots per, we've sold twenty. And we'd like to move these to a lower location so we can develop them. Like it's really pretty. Simple, yeah.
Okay. Um, what I have here is the application for the boundary line adjustment is to create four additional lots in Phase One. Phase, Phase One currently has twenty lots. It was approved initially to be twenty-four lots. The additional lots will bring the development into, into the total original approval. It's a boundary line adjustment from other boundary line adjustments that we've made in the past. FYI, Phase Two is an approved twenty lot. Phase Three is an approved seventeen. So that they will be a total of sixty-one as approved and set forth by the initial plans approved by the planning board and recorded in Grafton County Registry of Deeds. That was almost twenty years ago.
Two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven.
Just seems like twenty years.
Does. Um, no objections have been received from the forty-six of the voters, which have been notified. A couple have inquired to what was being proposed, but did not file any objections. Once they understood, it was, this was submitted to us by the Land Use Secretary Jane. She's gone over your application and, um, have no issues with it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if the board could look over the application and make a, and a recommendation. I do have the large map here. You should have a smaller map. We can give you the large map if you'd like it. Can see it up there. So what I'm looking is to accept the. Yes, this would be lots four, nine, eighteen, and twenty-four for final completion of Phase One. And I'm just looking to have the application, um, complete. I do understand that there was a miscalculation in the fees and you'll need to see Jane to take care of that.
Oh, yes, good check.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Correct, I need a motion to accept the application as complete first.
I moved, said the application is complete.
Okay, Linda has moved to accept the application as complete. Bethany has seconded the application as complete. All those in favor say, or any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Now for the lot line adjustment. Do we have any further discussion on that?
No.
Are there any conditions which you would like to impose upon him for these? In which case do I have a motion to accept this as? Done and ready for work.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the boundary line adjustment to move forward, say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, sir, you're in the past. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Um, if you see Jane, we can take care of the rest of that.
Will do, sure. That's a look there. I'm gonna show.
I didn't take.
Next order of business is a presentation by Jean.
Jenny.
Jenny Angel.
Hi, thank you all for coming. As, as Kendall said, I'm Jenny Angel. And just for the record, I am on the fly board. But, um, I'm here speaking on behalf of Jenny Angel. I'm not representing anything from the board. This is something I put together that I feel strongly about. And the discussion is about the village at Mill Pond, which is being developed as workforce housing, which is also known as affordable housing. And I know this is a discussion back and forth whether it's affordable or house or whatever. But I do have this flyer that was put out by the Lakes Region Community Developers that, and it's in your packet, and it clearly states that seventy-six units of work divorce rental housing. So that's where, where this started. Um. So the question, what use workforce housing, what it says here is really what it is. The village at Mill Pond is a new construction of seventy-six units of workforce rental housing located on Mill Pond Lane. Property serves individuals and families at or below thirty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent for eighty, four hundred, twenty percent up to Grafton County area median income. So that was what this was for. Um. So, affordable housing, what is the definition of affordable housing? Not a fixed. There is a, a variety of on the growth, that's after where the. Workforce housing, there's an art of saying in New Hampshire. And it says workforce housing and housing that is affordable through winter earning up to sixty percent of the aggregate medium income for a family of three, paying no more than thirty percent of their income on renting facility. Or a homeowner earning a hundred percent of the area community's income for a family of four, paying no more than thirty percent of their income. So there are adjustments made to accommodate these people. Hut housing is also affordable house, is a, can be affordable housing. And if you're in hut housing, you may get, um, the federal government may, might make, might be Section Eight, they may pay some of your rent. And then we have affordable senior housing and the common man, um, senior housing up on West Street. Um, that is affordable housing. Um, they made a deal with the town. They don't pay the school portion of the taxes. So it makes it more, they can make it more affordable for the residents because their costs are low. New Hampshire law states very clearly that communities must provide their, this is in quotes, fair share of, in quotes, affordable housing. And there was, there was a case of, uh, a case law in New Hampshire, Britain versus Chester, where the Supreme Court held that every municipality, every, must provide a reasonable and realistic opportunity for development of affordable housing. The court also reiterated the regional needs surrounding communities are relevant and required communities in New Hampshire to provide a proportionate or fair share of affordable housing. That's what they're saying. I will here show that Ashland already provides the floor and its fair share of affordable housing. And I will then describe why the Mill Pond Development is a detrimental to the town. So first, um, we have seen a few things around the world where the developer has said, well, it's, it's going to be market rate. But there's a problem that the developer, Lakes Region Community Land Trust, who is a developer, has documents that were filed in nineteen eighty-eight and this paragraph still sent to the state today. Their mission is to provide access to housing and productive resources through the acquisition of land, of acquisition lease and sale of property for lower income households and other disadvantaged people. That's their charter. So they can't just go say, well, we're just gonna build market rate housing, housing because their charter says this is what they have to do. If it's, they're not doing this, so it's outside of their charter. So. In Grafton County, if you like, if you've got the handouts, we've got a couple of charts. Couple of charts, Grafton County. We have one, we have about one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four people who's in. And for the hut housing in Ashland, Ashland. For the total population in Grafton County, there is two point one percent of the total population of Grafton County are using hut housing services. Ashland is doing three point two percent of the population for hut housing. So there, where, where, where more than our fair share is for that hut housing. And then if we go to another group, Lakes Region, which is this other shit here. Lakes Region, this is, um, for, this track goes through restrictive, restricted income housing. The total population of Lakes Region is a hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-eight. Ashland has nineteen sixty-four. We're one point five seven percent of the population of the Lakes Region. But we have four point two three percent of the hut house, of the, um, income restricted housing. So we're doing more than our fair share there. And affordable housing in town includes Amesburg. Some of you might know it as Lakewood, Common Man, the housing, Highland Apartments, those are senior housing. And then we also have a lot of lower cost housing, uh, by small landlords. Um, a lot of these were big houses that have been broken up. And we have the lower cost housing because twenty-four point seven percent of the residents in Tashland, or about four hundred eighty-five of them, are currently living below the poverty line. So we have that many below the poverty line. Then you gotta think about it, there are a lot of people who are living just barely above the poverty line. So we have fairly large group of people who, some would say are distressed financially. But as I said, we're clearly providing housing because they're living there. And Ashland is not a community that is trying to push them away and say, not in my neighborhood. Um. We embrace everybody who lives here. I, I know Anne Marie with, with the, with the Prax programs. They do, they get donations, scholarships, so the kids can go on the teams, so the kids go to summer camp. We do whatever we can to embrace the people, to help them. So we're not trying to push anybody away. So how some of these developers do this is the developer can works with others to put housing in where they pay, where the applicants can pay less than market rate. There are a number of ways that the developer can afford to do this. One is the state works up what is called a capitalization rate. And I don't think you'd have this thing, but this is, this is one from Amesburg. And what it is, they work with the state, they come up with a rate for the whole county that's applied to the value and it reduces the assessed value for the town. So the owner of the property who's providing the affordable housing actually pays less tax, pays less property tax. That's how that works. And so for like the Amesburg, this was, this is a couple of years ago, but they were paying forty-two thousand even in taxes. There are some people with single family houses who are paying more than that. So, of course, they're the rich people, but they, they are. Um, and I have been told and described around, you know, that Mill Pond might be thirty-eight, fifty-five. And I think I saw something in, you know, it's like a little more than that. But it depends on the capitalization rate, like programs or if these programs are coming. So, so the next thing is, well, why is this bad for the community? We've got a number of people, we've got a good proportion of people who are lower income. So putting in affordable housing seems like a no brainer because we need housing. People should be able to have quality housing to live. But the problem is, we've got to reduce tax, we've got, who is going to pay for this? And in your, in your packet that Ron put this together, you've got, this is mine, not my, my thing on this side. But if you turn it over, you see a document that was created by the Mill Pond people. This is not Amesburg, Mill Pond. And if you go to page two of the document. It says, the net impact to the school, the net impact to the school. This development is going to cost the town after they pay their taxes according to the developer. And I say, okay, you look at the cost of developer, they're gonna be a little low. You look at the top cost of school now, it's gonna be a little lot high, but you know, there's somewhere in there. These are the developers' figures, that it's going to be a net deficit to this town of four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars every year, not just the first year, this is everything. So that four hundred seventy-six or whatever it is, still has to be raised because the town has these expenses. So what happens is it gets added to the tax bill. So you got people, rich people up on the health plan and no one's gonna go sorry for them, you know. As I talked about before, you have a lot of small landlords who are providing, well, their taxes are going up. Well, the only things that, you know, if their taxes are going up, these are those small landlords providing housing, lower income housing. They either have to raise the rent, lower the quality of the maintenance, which lowers the quality of the housing, or both. So what happens with this is generally when you do a, a, a project, you've got investors decide whether they want to invest in it. But here, you've got people living below the poverty line or right at the poverty line, having to help finance this project. They don't have choice. Their rent's going up. So it's part of the financing of this project is on your backs. And this is, so. My whole thing on this is, this program is an unfunded mandate. And when this, when it's put into a financially stressed community and makes a poor town poor. And what some states are starting to, we don't have it here, at least I haven't seen, they just passed some housing and I haven't, housing regulations and I haven't read them, so, but I haven't heard that much. They've started to put in legislation where if a community is, is at twenty percent or, or higher of residents living below the poverty line, they do not have to add more affordable housing because it puts the community on the bottom spot as well. So while I'm all for quality housing for everybody, this, this particular project, the way it gets funded, the, the, almost half a million dollars every year that the town's going to have to raise to pay for this. As well. So I did respect, is respectfully requesting that the planning board consider rejecting the application. Anybody have a question?
Thank you for, for your presentation. All questions will go through the chair.
Uh, my question is.
Did you state your name?
I, I'm Aaron Schlesky. Uh, I'm, uh, the new owner of the dam at Mill Pond here. Uh, my question's a little complicated, but not really. So there's two thousand people in town roughly and the tax bill is gonna go up by four hundred thousand. Are you going to put it more on businesses and?
We don't have that much. We don't have that much.
No, but how do you divide?
Yes, yes.
How do you divide between, splitting between low, between people who live here and the business?
It's based on property values.
Property values.
It's just everything.
Sir.
Name is Paul Hanks, Level River Street. Your conversation talking about all the stats and stuff like that, you had made mention of that Ashland at the percentages of what they do have below income housing, so what is sold. Is there a limit to what any town can have or, you know what I'm saying? As far as, let's say you could have thirty and would met that thirty as far as what the state.
As, as her previous statement at the end was, the, our state has not passed that law. Several of the states have, but ours has not at this time. So the answer is no.
No.
Just, you know, we are.
Just fair share, which isn't, is not defined well anywhere.
And I, and it's in, is in my pack, but I just said, we, we have the highest rate of citizens living below the poverty line in Grafton County and we are second in the state.
So there's nothing forcing us to pass.
There's nothing forcing us one way or the other. Okay. Yes.
I'm looking again, thirty-one Dico Street. Um, is there anything that states that abiding towns have any obligation to fulfill this requirement that the state has put forward? Well, as you, as you, as you see on my, my, my spreadsheet, it's very specifically Plymouth maybe a little bit because we have a point, but none of the abiding communities in Ashland have any assisted housing, low income housing, elderly housing, hut housing.
Zero.
Zero.
So.
Zero.
But every house, every town in New Hampshire must follow New Hampshire housing standards.
But they don't. They're not fulfilling that.
If they're not asked to, then they don't have to.
You know, if they, if they, it's expensive.
Want a copy of it?
I have it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the land is too expensive, so they're going to go someplace where they hope it's cheaper. This, where is any laws for?
Okay, need to wrap this up?
I have one other question.
Risk, but she hasn't asked one yet?
I'm, I'm quick. Stacy Lavo River Street. Will the people have a vote on this? Or do the selectmen vote to bring a project?
Neither.
Don't.
Planning board, that's why we're here tonight.
So the planning board makes the decision. So we, you know, we don't vote on it.
And, and whatever conditions are set and state rules and regulations based upon our planning rules and regulations as well. Michelle?
Well, I'm very excited to summary. Am I doing the math right? They're telling us that we're gonna have to answer for a physical impact of four point seven.
Yeah, that's what I said, yes, yes.
The next ten years?
No, forever, forever.
If I multiply that out, that's four point seven million dollars in the next ten years. With that in perspective, because we have, we have a budget in the whole town, four million dollars.
Right, we're three, yes.
We have a budget for the whole school, which is around that number. So I'm just looking at this thing, I know we have ten or twenty million dollars in deferred maintenance between many different apartments that are found, you know what I'm doing? So I, this is just four point seven million dollars over ten years.
And this one.
I don't see how there's possibly where to do.
And this one for the rise housing, depending on what, who is asked to make, is my people a hundred fifty people? This is what we're gonna have to pay.
Okay. Yes, miss, sir.
My name is Gray, I live in Monroe, Aurora, have been a resident and homeowner for forty-five years. And I just wanna make a statement that, and it's today, we have a second forest town in this state.
Yes.
Those don't know, we should take a cinder block, most of them.
Okay. We're gonna close.
So.
One last question.
Perfect. So Ryan Carmel, Carmel Drive in Ashland. Uh, so does this number change depending on like who are the people that are in the, the building? If it's like all. If it's like all vets or like all just disabled people and no children, so it's not adding people to?
Well, okay, this is, this is, but what they did is they went and they looked at other, supposedly, this is from the developer, looked at the amount of kids and people in other similar developments, how many people were there? How many kids in school? And that's where they came up with that. And I, I look at that stuff, they're probably low, and then I look at the schools type of stuff, they're probably high. So it's probably somewhere in between.
It's based off averages.
Is there a way to just make it for like disabled vets?
There's not.
Like, like, not.
That is not the proposal before, so the answer is no.
So to not like add children to a school system, there's no way to do that?
Last question.
So what are our options? How can the town protect itself?
We have planning board rules and regulations as what our protection is for anybody who comes before us or anything.
Thank you, ask, how do we stop these people from putting in all this?
Our planning board rules and regulations are, are what we have to govern by. If, if the rules and regulations allow, then we have to allow. If they don't, then we have to say where they don't. But we work in good faith with, with everyone who comes before us.
Do we know what our options are? I, I mean, do we have a way to stop Mill Pond, or do we not, if you have rules and regulations?
We just have our rules and regulations.
What they are.
Anything we can do to tell them now?
There, there, we have to go by our rules and regulations as set forth by the town, voted on the town. Every year, we have different rules and regulations that come before for, for votes.
Are there any rules or regulations that can stop this that we have in the town? I guess that's my question.
I have to let them do their presentation, I can't, I can't, cannot answer that. And they're doing a new submittal tonight, so, so I, I don't know.
What about the fact that, like, I thought if it was a private road, like, it has to be voted on in order to, like, make it?
And that's what they're going to present tonight, we're gonna, we have to let them do their presentation tonight.
Okay, but that will be a town vote for us to like?
No, that's, that's with the board of selectmen.
Does the board of selectmen have a legal counsel behind anything?
Yes, they have, they have very good legal counsel, he's sitting right here.
Can I ask a question of legal counsel?
Possibly.
You can just tell me whether you can answer it or not. Laurie, like, two forty-nine River Street, my question is. The town does not have to approve this project if it impoverishes the town, yes or no?
We're going to work through that. We cannot answer that at this time.
I thought he was going to answer it though.
Well, I was going to say that that's not really what's pending right now. Right now, what's pending is the presentation that's been made and the application is going to be coming next up on the agenda.
Alright, correct.
Some of that information. Yeah, you got, I think some of the similar discussion now will happen.
Right, we gotta let them make their presentation. She's only doing a presentation on affordable housing in Ashland and where it is and where it stands. As a resident. For which we will close now. And. Um, Kara. You guys are welcome to come on up. First, first of all, though, are you prepared to answer the questions which you said you would answer at the next meeting?
I have the written question.
The written questions. The ones from the, the ones from the walk.
We can go through the answers that we submitted in writing.
Could you please, because the public would like to hear those.
Sure.
And we keep getting asked for those, even though we direct you to them.
Are there any answers available to play?
They are available probably as well. But if you could give a brief synopsis of them, that would be greatly appreciated.
Will we get, will we officially open the public hearing?
We not yet opened the public hearing on that, do you want me to answer the questions?
I need to make, you need a motion to.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Mill Pond development continuation? Linda, so makes that motion, do I have a second? It was seconded by Andy. All those in favor of opening this for debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so go ahead.
Thank you, before we get to those questions and answers, I just want to put on the record that the board just heard a presentation which did directly relate to the applicant's project, however, was a separate agenda item. That is highly irregular, and I have to put our objection to that on the record for purpose of appeal. And would also request a full presentation, we made part of the record for this application. The applicant does disagree with much of the information that was prevented and presented and will be responding separately in writing in advance of the next public hearing.
You want a copy of it?
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, so, uh, my name is Jeff Lewis, I'm a principal engineer at, you want to put engineering, uh, the board and I've always been here with, 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 uh, different engineer for our office, Karen Leonard, uh, who was expected to be here tonight, but is sick, so we can, so I'm going to do my best to throw in recaps where we are, where we, who we are, what we've done. I do have a copy of the, uh, we did submit written response to all the questions that were presented to us, I see it was dated July second, so it's been in town since about that time. It's taken quite a bit of time to go through all those, I'm happy to do that if you want.
Can you just give a recap of the important part?
The important part, uh, I don't know what the important parts are, there were fifty, there were fifty, there were fifty, fifty plus comments, which ones were important? Sixty-three comments, if you want to come, which ones were important, I'd be happy to.
All of them.
Or, or the public, it's, it's been available for over two months, so whatever you prefer, anybody could be responsive right there. I remember.
Yeah, it's just that the last time you guys said that, Kevin said that you guys would present.
With the houses July.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm happy to present it or read it, wherever, where do you want.
Yeah. What do you guys want?
We'll start with the presentation.
Alright. We'll start with your presentation.
So my presentation is really just to update you on what we think, where we think we kind of left off and what they actually had. We worked, we worked for the board in July, July seventeenth. Uh, we have two applications, as I'm sure you're aware, the subdivision application and the site plan application. Um, we, we understand the town has, at the last meeting, the town talking, getting a second legal opinion, we understand that that has happened here, um, on a number of items, so hopefully town is further along in their evaluation of any legal issues. Uh, we did have a opportunity to meet with the electric department on July twenty-ninth, that was organized by Mr. Beard. Um, and reviewed utility layout items, uh, it was important to me that was very productive meeting. And we revised the best comments and input from, uh, from the department. Uh, we also at that time had, uh, our request for more information from Brown Engineering, who did the technical review on these applications. Uh, and we revised the plans, we addressed all comments that we submitted two weeks ago on September fourth, which was the request for us to address all the comments from Brown Engineering, we addressed all the comments from department heads. We have not received any additional comments from department heads, uh, to date, uh, so as far as we know, we addressed all comments. Um, a couple of the comments that we had addressed that were worthy, uh, noteworthy were the fire chief had requested, uh, Hammerhead at the center unit drive of the site plan, we added that, uh, to the plans. Uh, and then, as I just mentioned, the utility layout from the electric department, uh, we revised the plans to accommodate those, those comments. Uh, we did receive an updated memo from Brown Engineering yesterday with additional comments that are getting, this list is getting shorter and shorter, so I think we're looking through most of those. Uh, the remaining ones seem to be focused on state permitting, which as you're aware, we are just in state permits for, we want to make sure we're all clear with the planning board before we do that, which we're allowed to do. And there's still some remaining comments that have to do with industrial drive, understanding is the town's still working through options for that, and this will be getting back to the team, uh, to see if there's any changes to the design up there. Uh, so we're kind of holding off on finalizing any comments that do the site plan up there until we get the record from the town. Um, also noteworthy is Vanessa Associates, who's our traffic consultant, they did correspond with the district engineer, initiated key, and have shared their traffic study, uh, with the review engineer, which is something that was asked for them to do. So those are things that have happened since we were last before you were in, in July. Uh, regarding the subdivision application specifically, we're not aware of any additional, as I just mentioned, we're not aware of any additional comments on water, sewer, police, fire, public works. Um, electric plant updates were submitted two weeks ago, we have not received any reply on those. Uh, the, the one thing that is still outstanding is our waiver request, we had submitted, as you recall, we had a waiver, and it was still in the year, it was denied regarding the road grip. So we revised the plans back in July to update the road, widen the road to meet the regulations, but we do have a waiver request regarding closed drainage to the, to the road, those are regulations to not contemplate. Uh, so we presented that at the last meeting in July. Uh, there was a letter from Brown Engineering basically supporting that waiver request, thinking that makes sense. Uh, to add closed drainage to that road, my understanding was that the board wanted to take some more time to deliberate on that item, so we're hoping that that has happened, it has happened in a few months. So we're hoping to get a, we, we'd like to get a vote on that waiver tonight, unless there's other things you need us to address regarding that waiver. Uh, and I think we're in good shape on the subdivision, we're not aware of any other issues. We think that there's a, certainly a desire subject to state permits, which we know we need, and we know we still need a final design of the retaining wall of Mill Pond, which is going to be integral to the state permitting, so. Really, we're not inclined to move on the battlefield, noticing that we have some feedback from the board or a judicial approval, so, uh, that's what we're hoping for tonight. And the second application. Again, we revised the plans two weeks ago. Uh, the big, biggest change that happened was the addition of a turnaround for the fire, PMR, for this fire department. Uh, we haven't received any additional comments, what else are you waiting for from us on that? If there's additional comments or additional things you need from us, we'd like to kind of be very, very adept on that as soon as you're ready. That's, I think, about all I wanted to say, if you guys have something else to add, and then I'm happy to do whatever you want to do with that.
Is the board having any questions? Miss, the waiver, what is your pleasure on the waiver? Waiver is to change the town's, town requirements of open drainage to a closed drainage system. Correct?
That, that's, that's correct to allow, yep.
Who's going to maintain that?
Well, either way, I mean, the road would now be, has, has a, has a public road, it's a municipal road, it's in the end of the project, so that's what we propose. Whether it's a closed drainage, open drainage, that would be the, that would affect that as well.
That's new to me.
I'm pretty sure that's consistent with the application of the Mill, the Mill Pond, we're talking about Mill Pond.
Mill Pond, correct, which is, is a private road.
Which is being proposed as a municipal road, part of this, that's been this case all. Good people right away, which is why we needed a waiver from the planning board.
Alright, do I have a motion on the, to accept or deny the waiver?
I don't want to put us in that position tonight, I think we need to discuss this a little bit more. I was always under the impression that this was going to be a private road.
Okay, we have any other questions? So, have you met all the butters? Um, a group, agreement with all the butters with everything? And I haven't seen those on here, I know that Brown has said that those need to be on here.
I'm not sure we.
The butters' right of ways and easements?
As far as I know, the plan on, I'm, I'm not sure we, we've done here, was supposed to be.
Oh no, you're referring to the waterway?
Um, I'm referring to, yeah. The, the butter, I understand, has through yours, and also has right of ways to the pond. Those are not depicted upon here, you've said in the past that those were going to be, is my understanding.
What, a dam?
Yes, a dam specifically.
That's something we're still working through right now, I don't think it's particularly relevant to the waiver request itself. Um, but just to clarify what we were talking about previously, the road has, Mill Pond Lane has proposed, is proposed as a public road. Um, if the board is not inclined to approve that, then what we would have to do is enter into a maintenance agreement with all of the other butters on the road, because under the nature of law, everyone who utilizes a private right of way has an obligation to contribute to the maintenance of the right of way. So that would be, those are sort of the two options that.
You said in the previous meeting that you could put a, a fence across it, a gate. If it wasn't a private road, remember, remember that?
If it was in a private road?
If, if it was a private road, and restrict access in and out.
Not a restricted, you know.
No, on, on Mill Pond.
And we could put a gate at the end of Mill Pond, but that wouldn't change the fact that anyone who utilizes that road to access their property.
That is, that is true, yeah.
So those are sort of the two options, we proposed it as a public right of way, which is why we're asking for the waiver. But if the board is not inclined to accept it that way, we're going to have to go down that other route.
I think we need to discuss this a little bit more, I'm. I was unaware that this was going to be a public way, I was under the impression that it was owned by Mill Pond.
Correct.
It is currently owned by Mill Pond, but it's being proposed as a public right of way, we would dedicate the street to the town.
I think we need to discuss that a little bit more.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, this is exactly where we were two months ago, I believe, so has there been no discussion about it since then, or?
And, and the discussion can happen, and, and should happen, frankly, on. To make a decision, and you let us know what that is, we'll happily provide that to you. But if the discussion needs to happen, it, it can certainly happen and should happen at one of those meetings on the record.
Linda?
Yeah, just a clarification question, so my recollection is that Mill Pond Lane is currently, is that a town road?
No.
No. Oh, it's branded, okay.
Yes.
Because it does meet the town.
That it was proposed a while back, that if they took this, essentially a public road, but that we never reached a decision on them. That's my recollection.
That's correct, yes.
Might have been while I was off the board.
And so this waiver, you're asking with the assumption that it would become a public road, and you put in the drainage, but the town would then cover the cost, we were cleaning, would be the, from sex. I just want to make sure it's on your supply, I'm getting it.
And exactly how much of this road would become public? How far in would it go?
It's everything that is shown on that plan right there to the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
The top one you have right there.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the rest of the board is confused about this, it seems like this is presented for quite a while.
Honestly, I thought it was a private road. After our last meeting, I thought it was determined that this would be a private road. And it's, that's why you were asking for the closed drainage.
So I think I have an additional question, right now, there are existing residences on Mill Pond right now, and that's private. Oh, that's a private road, it's not public yet. The development, which is going to be. I'm not sure I've got the question fully formulated, so we've gone out sort of jumbled. But the part that Mill, that Mill Pond is proposing to develop, would that be? Would that be potentially private road, whereas existing residences?
That's.
Would be public road? So I guess what I'm not clear is if you're saying all the way into the cul-de-sac, that's well past.
What's proposed right now is that that entire order of the cul-de-sac is a public road. There's four hundred lots being, you know. Cul-de-sac, all are private.
Into the rental.
Correct, but that is all proposed.
Okay, so in other words, the houses that you're proposing to build would have a fat for humanity. Which would be the houses being sold at market rate. You're saying that, that the road means that would serve those houses would be a public road. Maintained by the town, and anything to serve the apartments that you're proposing would be private road maintained by.
That's.
Okay, but then that represents an interesting.
Right, and the Sluckman would have to accept it as a public road. That's not in the purview to do that.
I was gonna say, does Sluckman have to?
Yes.
What's the difference in cost of maintenance ballpark between, um, open and closed?
I have no idea. It depends on what the.
We have the. We have no closed drainage in the town. Our rules do not allow for it.
No, I was just wondering.
Right, no, I'm just saying, we don't know. In our, our department, there's an expertise for you.
So, and the reason for the closed drainage is that the. Cause the brother where you're saying that it's a lot of.
It's a very, I'm surprised, and I hear you say that there's no closed drainage in the town, that's telling me.
Correct.
Believe that is true, believe that's true. I like to, I'm gonna just double check on that, that part of the town is no, and then it's up right in Winter Street right there, that's right. Um, Winter Street is a closed drainage system. There's no ditch on the side of the road. Anytime you don't have a ditch on the side of the road, but you have a curb, that's like, that's closed.
There, there is a ditch on the side of Winter Street.
So if you have, if you have, um, if you have a curb, basically that's gonna be closed drainage. You don't have a curb, then it's, well, open drainage. You really wanna have a ditch to get the. Water off, off the road, right? Um, so, your premise why we're proposing here is it's a very narrow. Road, trying to get through there. We have a pond, very sensitive environmental area on one side, we have existing residents on the other. If we try to build a full width town road in there with a big, open ditch with slopes, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very disruptive to the neighbors that are out there. They'll end up driveway culverts under their drive and stuff like that. And the other side, there's not much we can do. It was way further to the, you know, to the pond. It'd be hard to, hard to collect. We want to treat all this stormwater right now. As part of a permit, we want to collect as much of it as we can and treat it before it gets into the water body. Uh getting any catch bases and projects is the way to do that. So, uh, that, that's just, it's very clearly to us the best option out there. Um, I think that as part of our state purpose, they'll agree with that, your, your, your reviewing of the support that we even understands to myself, so. I think if there's a, if there's a compelling reason not to do that, we haven't heard it. Uh, I'm not sure. About the maintenance cost, we absolutely get information on that, but it'll have to do with what your public works department currently does, what they're capable of doing.
I'm, I'm not aware that the public works director is aware that we're. This was a part of the plan. If you do do a closed drainage system, where's it gonna go like to?
We have a detention basis right there that is designed on the plan, it's been there for the whole time. Uh, maybe we're all, that's to handle all the stormwater comes from Mill Pond Lane.
Yes, so, am I right in thinking, if we were to approve this waiver. That doesn't determine one way or the other, whether or not the, the select board.
That is correct.
It just says approving the request for putting drainage.
Correct.
So to piggyback on what Linda's saying, my concern is, and why I asked you about the pricing, is if the selectmen decide not to approve it. Then it, it could be a difference in what we're imposing on you as well as the other land of butters. So I don't know if we want to chicken. Answer, it's a chicken and egg situation right now.
Yeah, I do, I, we might have misspoke in earlier, I just want to clarify. We're just based on the design that we have, we are going to want the waiver regardless of whether the road is public or private, and so a vote. To approve the waiver is not a vote to accept the road, or, or to, you know, not challenge the applicant's suggestion that the road can public. But I do understand that concern of the cost that I.
So then it sounds like we wait for that information. The answer to that, so.
No, I don't know if the cost makes any, any real difference.
Yeah, I don't think. I don't believe that comes, cause it's up to the select board to ask these questions.
Right. You're still be up to something with, the better environmental thing would be to grant the waiver.
How you guys feel about it?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver.
Also.
Andy was just gonna say something.
Sorry, Andy, I apologize.
No, I was just trying to get, get a hand for everybody.
Hey, I have a motion by Bethany, second by Linda, to grant the waiver on a closed drainage system for the area known as Mill Pond area. Mill Pond Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed, motion passes. Is there anything else at the board? As questions on?
Um, no, not regarding that.
Not regarding that, anything on the applicant before us?
Are you gonna open it up for public comment?
No, not yet.
I, I do have a question, and I just might see you being real blonde over here, and it's okay if I am. You're saying that you sit up in the hammerhead instead of circle?
No, instead of the circle, it's on though.
Perfect, thank you.
At the very end of the left-hand side of the plan, that was. They want to turn over.
Exactly what I was looking for.
Keep it good with that.
That was done based off of the code, they were, yeah, being going, they put that in strictly off of the code.
And for the record, the fire chief was gay. Alright, moving on.
There was a question earlier, a gentleman in the black shirt with a hat on, he has Hannah Crowell.
Sir, say your name.
It's like open now?
It is open now.
Aaron Sluski, uh, one of the owners of the dam at the end of Mill Pond Lane there. Or through their property. I would just like to read you our easements through their property that they just said, uh, that there's basically no problem with. A, the right to pass and repass being common with others entitled. There too, at the grantee's own risk, over and across the certain right of way fifty feet with. Which right of ways depicted as an unnamed roadway on sheet two. Of the plans recorded in the graph and weeds, serving the current area and successors we assign. The right to change the exact location of the fifty-foot right of way. So basically, from Winter Street all the way to the property, on the bottom of that map, it's not shown. We have a fifty foot, but they can move the shape of it, but we have the right to go through fifty feet. Unencumbered, nothing built on it. And then that one's. But as you can see, the coming off the end of the cul-de-sac, you go down to those, uh, condos. There's that little neck down, and then a little swoopy thing down to our property, uh, that is not fifty feet. Obviously, with that, B, the non-exclusive right to dredge, remove soil, box, sediments from Mill Pond. Provided that such dredging and removal operations shall be performed at the grantee's own expense and risk. And then complies with any and all state statutes, ordinances, governments, standing out or here at the. Um, if you see the bottom right of the bottom plan there, there's a house. Uh, a condo that is less than fifty feet from the shoreline. And I would argue that it's very difficult to maintain that if the pond was a house that close. Oh, C, the right to erect and maintain poles, supports, guys, and wires over and across lot two, as depicted, which is their. With electricity and telephone service. The exact location of said pole, supports, guys, and wires shall be by initial consent. The parties shall thereupon become friendly. Does anybody see any power lines or bolts on the plan? I don't. C, the right to raise the water level of the Mill Pond to a height of four hundred ninety-six point seven feet above the mean. Approximate mean sea level based upon the assumed venture of five hundred feet above approximate mean sea level, hoping that the top of the foundation will help, less place out of this. That means we can raise the lower water level of the pond so that we can generate more power. There's not ways to. That all of their plans show a tip line. And I have not really gotten a good response, and it should be when we want it. E, the right to maintain the slopes that are open to. He, the right drainage is going from Bangas along the shore, no pond down there, and the end of the drainage. Or I skipped ahead, but. The problem, so, uh, I don't fully understand why they say that. And, if not, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could just respond briefly. Uh, we have been attempting to engage with the owner of that property in order to discuss the easements. We understand that they're there, we're not ignoring them. And listen, we fully acknowledge that if we were to get this plan approved and could not work things out with them, that would be a problem for us. But by all means, discuss with your lawyer, the fact that an easement exists and that we have to have that discussion with a third party is not a basis for denying the site plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So, to piggyback off of that, Brian Kamel, Six Kamel Drive. So if they don't agree. To agree with all of this, you can still like go ahead.
We can get our site plan application, but if we build something that interferes.
But that's their property, so they're not allowed to be like.
Our site plan application is separate from development. So approval of the site plan application is one thing, actually engagement development is another. If we do something. It actually physically on the property that interferes with their rights, that's an issue. That is separate from.
We should be able to do, I mean, the beginning with, if they disagree with it, then. So I will. Hurt, sorry.
Richard Grillin, Mill Pond, and. Going back to his point, fifty-foot right of way. We're, we're speaking about maybe a twenty-six or twenty-eight foot road going down there. Where does the fifty foot, is that? The middle of the pond, back to my property line? Where, where do we get fifty feet when there isn't fifty feet to be at? I've asked this before, we did the war, we weren't allowed to speak. However, I don't think it's really been truly answered. Where can you start your property on the waterline, when it's low, when it's high, when it's somewhere in between? Where, where do you guys even begin? To pull your boundary from the rivers though?
The fifty feet is from your property on Mill Pond Lane, fifty feet towards the pond, that's the fifty foot right of way. Right, so the road needs to be built with the map. Which is what is shown on these plans right here. So we're building that twenty-eight foot road within that fifty-foot right of way. I mean, the right, the, the right of way falls in different spots, as you know, down the guys in terms, in terms of relative closeness to the water. Some of it's down on the slope, some of it, so it's, why we need, in order to build that road, we need to build a. So, I'm not sure if I answered your question, but if we go from your property line, fifty feet towards the pond.
That's my question, absolutely right to walk through. They struggled to get to twenty-eight feet. So if that's the case, where's the other twelve feet?
What's down, it's down, it's down, it's down.
So what you're saying is you've been building a retaining wall and then filling in to come up with the fifty feet?
Yes, that, yes.
So my question is. Again, I asked this, I'm just asking a minute. Where at the water level, ground, wetlands, what have you, where does your property start? That's my question. Do you have to be extra nine feet from the river? Do you have to be extra nine feet from the wetland, not just standing water?
You know, I, I'm looking at the plan right now, and it's, it, I'm, I'm telling you, it's not, it's, it's, the, the property line is shown on our plan. And it's not, doesn't follow the current water line.
DES is going to, correct, I'm wrong, DES is going to be the ones that figure that out. That is within, I, I understand, but it falls within the purview of DES, and we've been told we cannot interfere with DES.
Right.
So that's why I don't have an answer for you.
There's gotta be a law that says you've gotta be within three feet of standing water, or three feet from wetlands or something. There's gotta be a law that's called knowledge. Somebody must know, he's an engineer, I was thinking you have some common sense, but I don't. But I'm asking the first second time, so. It's gotta be.
We, we don't have an answer for you. It's his answer, it's correct.
But, because when you talk about the structure, the physical structure of the road and the improvement, there's, you're talking about shore that's that vast, as we're talking about, you will need a shoreline permit for this. There are rules and there's regulations for that, and there's waivers you get from that, so there, there are, it depends on what you're building. If you're building a house, if you're building what's out there, what's existing out there, what are you doing from green, so you're doing something to improve the water quality, so. It's gonna be all, the all, my question is one of many, part of our shore and some other occasion for the DES. So the answer to your question is, yeah, we, we feel confident, we can get a permit from the DES, but we're building this road.
Pass the road and build your road.
Question, where is the electrical poles?
Where are the electric?
Where are they physically located currently?
And I believe all the existing electrical poles are shown on ours.
Yeah, can you bring that up on the map, just so we can see it?
So they are, they are.
My understanding, Aaron has three poles, where are those three poles?
They're all, they're all in the plan, you see, they're all underneath the.
My understanding is though, that some of them are within where these, where these things are.
Maybe.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Um, my name is Derrick Stowe, I own multiple apartment buildings in Ashland, and I would like to, one of my apartment buildings is in a butter to this project. Um, and I would like to say my husband and I do the best that we can to provide affordable housing for people to live in Ashland. Um, we are landlords that are not, the landlords that are jacking up the rent. We have our tenants coming up to us that are afraid of their rents going up due to this project. I also have, um, because I haven't been afraid to speak up, I have residents of Ashland messaging. And express those peers. Um, I've also had residents of the Amesbrook or whatever the other affordable. Lowland housing, Ledgewood, are in Ashland, they've reached out to me to, because they are too afraid to speak up for themselves. Because of the drugs that are happening, because of the lack of maintenance that is happening in their apartment building. And I'm a landlord myself in town, so that's disgusting, that these people want to add in more housing to our community. And they're not maintaining what they have. So I just want to read to the planning board, um, something I wrote. And it's not just coming from me, but this is coming from this town. I'm writing to express my opposition to the proposed housing development known as the Village at Mill Pond. I've attended numerous meetings, listened carefully, learned the information presented, and voiced concerns. Concerns shared by many fellow residents. As the project continues to evolve, I find myself increasingly skeptical and confused about its intentions and impact. I'd like to outline several key concerns. As of July seventh, the Lakes Region Community Developers website states. This property will not offer subsidized housing, and applicants must demonstrate sufficient income to afford the rent. Because this property does not offer rental subsidy. This directly contradicts what we were initially told, that income level would not be a barrier. And rent would be capped at thirty percent of an individual's income. This is no longer an affordable housing project. It has effectively become a standard market rate apartment development. What began as senior housing initiative shifted to affordable housing and is now morphed into a project. That excludes subsidized housing altogether. These shifting narratives are misleading to the citizens and taxpayers of Ashland. Frankly, it does not feel honest or fair to the community that has invested time and trust into understanding and supporting what we thought was a project focused on genuine affordability. Furthermore, in April twenty twenty-five, the M R D group conducted a fiscal impact analysis report estimating that the Mill Pond project would cost the town approximately four hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred twenty dollars annually. This means that the town would need to raise nearly half a million dollars each year to support the additional municipal services and infrastructure the project would require. As a result, Ashland's total tax commitment, including municipal, county, state education and local education, would increase from eight million, for about eight point two million dollars to eight point seven million dollars. This represents a six percent increase. For homeowners, this would be an additional sixty dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed property value. A substantial financial burden for many households in our community. There are also significant historical concerns. The Mill Pond dam in Ashland is historically tied to the Ashland First Mill, which has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places since seventeen, nineteen seventy-nine. According to New Hampshire RSA two twenty-seven C, this state law establishes the framework for historic preservation in New Hampshire, recognizing the importance of the state's heritage and the need to protect it from the impact of development. What in a development that disrupts water flow, affects water quality and introduces new infrastructure like power lines in this historical significant area violate the intent of the statute? For these reasons, raising from financial strain on taxpayers, the abandonment of affordability promises, this potential harm to our historic district, I respectfully urge the planning board to reconsider approving this project in its current form. So those of you who ask how you can help, write letters. Don't be afraid. We need to speak up as one. We need to help each other out. My voice.
Okay, okay. Give me rebuttal.
Well, a couple things. Um, I said this before and I will repeat it, so hopefully it sticks a little bit this time. So there is not rental subsidy at this property. There is not a hub regulated rental subsidy. So Ledgewood Estates that we currently own does have that, that is subsidized. This proposed development does not have that. I do believe in previous presentations, but I have no, no, I, I just want to clarify what I said.
Yeah, Sarah, direct control.
Sorry, I have no previous presentations that I've attended. I thought that I understood that they said that anybody could apply for one of their apartments and that their rent would be thirty percent of their income. So I could be working at Burger King and my rent would only be thirty percent of my income, or I could be a teacher here and my rent would be thirty percent of my income. And that because both of them were paying thirty percent of their income, that it was fair. But you can't do that with this, correct? So I do believe in the concept was presented that way.
But they've moved on at this point, I'm going to say. You have moved on to that. It's no longer the case, correct?
What, the thirty percent income?
Right.
Okay. All liited properties have restrictions for area median income. You can have sixty percent, fifty percent. So an individual needs to make up to thirty percent of the Bratton County area median income to qualify. They have, their income has to qualify at fifty percent of the area median income of Bratton County and same goes for the separate set units. So if an individual qualifies with their income up to sixty percent of the area median income of Bratton County. Does that make sense? I understand what you're saying, but I think that the way it was previously presented is very misleading to a lot of the people in town. And I feel that, you know, we're being pulled different phrases and different things and it's just.
Okay.
It's not fair to the townspeople is what I'm saying. And my big thing, like I said, I, you know, I have people that are messaging me who have lived, that live at.
I, I understand.
It's frustrating.
I, I understand and we, we know that. We're, we're going to move on.
I, I'd just like to respond briefly and just say, we, it's a complicated subject as people that don't work in it. I don't work in it every day and it's confusing to me. And we're going to put together something to submit and write it. Hopefully it's playing it better than, that is more readable. So hopefully that will be helpful.
Okay, Linda?
Yeah. So again, bear with me because part of my head needs to kind of. Um, Kendall said earlier in response to some of the questions that we are bound by the rules and the regulations that govern the planning. Those rules and regulations have been developed over time, just like the ones for the zoning board. The planning board has a set of rules and regulations we are bound by. Sometimes they protect us whoever put them in place back in whatever day, didn't necessarily anticipate everything that might eventually happen. So sometimes you don't know that there's a loophole in something until someone finds the loophole and then whoever finds the loophole, as long as that's part of the planning board regulations and work within that loophole and the hands of the planning board to that degree are tough. Guidelines that have anything to do with the financial impact on the town. That is not within the rules and regulations that govern, that have to govern our decisions. So however, whatever our individual feelings on that, the, the, the rules that we have to follow say, does it meet this set of criteria? If it does, then we're bound by that, however, whatever our personal feelings. Is that my right so far?
I believe so.
Okay. Second set of rules are the state laws. That's the environmental laws, the, you know, laws about, you know, any of all of the state laws and related permits that a development has to adhere to. All of those state environmental laws and so on are, as, as Kendall said earlier, are outside of our authority, but we can require that those permits have to be secured for any building to have. Okay, so if, if for whatever reason the D E S does not grant permits, then building can't happen until those permits are in it. We have no say over that except to say we want to see the following permits secured.
And they will have public hearings as well that everyone can weigh in on.
Yep. And so those are two separate sets of rules that a developer has to abide by. But there are limits to what we can require. Except that we can require that state laws and so on be followed and in detail and so on. And even if it's to say that if we conditionally approve something, it's conditional that any actual building cannot start without all of those protections. So even if, let's hypothetically say that the plans meet all of the planning board criteria. And we issue a conditional approval, that doesn't mean that building can start. Because all of these other permitting issues would have to be resolved. I'm, did I say that accurately? Okay, I just, these are things I have to sort out. So I'm assuming that they confuse me, maybe they confuse others.
Right, I'm going to recognize Mr. Letourneau and Mr. Perry, um, parade.
First. Uh, thank you, Chairman. I will say that in brief. Uh, I'll give you some background to start with.
Damari Raff, I have to smile at that.
There's a little background. I grew up in New Hampshire. Now, I have a great Salem, New Hampshire. When I was growing up, it was a small community. Today, thirty thousand people. My wife and I, when we got married, we lived in Salem and we moved to Derry, which was a small community, about six, seven thousand people at the time. It's now thirty-four thousand people. So what I'm telling you is, I've seen this movie before. This is what it is. You're hearing all of these facts and figures and they're all, they're all correct. But the bottom line is, Nashville is in the middle of the state, geographical southern state, and it's one of the most beautiful towns in the state. I'm a photographer and I have photographs of this town. They're actual, this, um, this place is beautiful. This project is going to ruin this. This project, they have misled us so many times, so many ways, as people are pointing out here. We've been misled. Everything keeps changing. I have said consistently, there is environmental impact down there that has not been addressed. There is impacts on roads that have not been addressed. I spent fourteen years on transportation committee in the legislature and eight years as the senate chairman. These road projects have to be approved by the state. Has to be approved by the state to be taken. The environmental issues have to be approved by the D E S. They have the power and the law to take care of this. And they're going to have to do it. But this project has a whole host of unknowns. There's so many unknowns in this project, it makes people dizzy. This board has worked very, very hard to make sure that they are processing all their Ts and guarding all their Is. Right, no mistake. They're not making any favor to us, towards anything. They're going by the laws and the rules. Rules and regulations in this state have a force and effect of law. And that's true stuff. People think rules and regulations is to be broken. Oh, no. You can end up in jail for breaking rules and regulations. They have the force and effect of law. Don't ever forget that. So my recommendation is to this board is that forever stay in your ground and do what you can. But I recommend that you do not approve anything of this project. This project will be the detriment of this, this town. We've seen all the numbers. The numbers they have given you tonight, in my opinion, are extremely low. There's a, there's a million dollars that they will need. That's just the school. Then we get the, we get the town services. If the fire department, police department, the water, sewer, everything's going to be impacted. Those numbers are extremely low. Hundred people in this town according to the census, about five hundred less than the census.
Right, yeah.
Then there'll be like a hundred, but it's just passed.
I am just pointing out these facts.
Yep.
And that's my recommendation to the board.
Thank you.
You are representing
Yes.
the town.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry.
Yeah, I'll put it again. I have a.
Thank you, Bob.
As in the past with any private strategy, i.e. the school, the incinerator, even down to fire truck or police vehicle, we always vote on the article, okay? My question is, is this a warrant article?
It is not.
It may warrant a.
Cannot. Isn't, the attorney just shook his head to me. But it's, it is a planning board. It's not, it comes before the planning board. We are your, your representatives for that. Um, it is not a warrant article issue. I don't.
Well, it's not.
Right?
As in, what about the incinerator?
The incinerator wa- was a totally different thing. It did not, it never came before the planning board.
I'm following that guideline. Is it, is it, does it need to be, um?
The incinerator was not a land use board issue. Unfortunately, or fortunately, or however you want to look at it, it is the book that you wrote on in March as we change it and add stuff to it. Um, it is your zoning ordinance, your site plan ordinance, your driveway ordinances, all of those ordinances. The voters have a, have a say in it when, when we bring those up. They'll be bringing up some more this year.
So there's a loophole right there.
Unfortunately, well, yeah.
Yeah.
It does not go before the voters to vote on. We have to follow what the voters have told us in the zoning ordinance. Correct? Yes.
Yeah, so going back to when we were talking about rules and regulations, those rules and regulations are what the voters do vote on in the warrant articles. The existing rules and regulations allow for the proposal of, for the proposal of developments like this. Um, the planning board has the job of updating and revising and proposing to voters revisions to those rules. Again, that's the warrant article point. But at the time a proposal comes forward, it comes forward under the existing rules and regulations, not under future ones.
And, and the master plan is a big part of that, which I'm sure you're going to see a warrant article this year to update our master plan.
Right now, we're bound by the current rules and regulations.
Right.
That the voters decide what they want.
Yvonne?
Um, going back to, um, misleading and I, I've said it before and I submitted um, my survey that now the spending cap on my property, which is one in the road are all wrong, even where they have my building. Um, when we did the walk, I pointed out they forced, they were there, but they were being totally wrong. We have that property right there. And, uh, and so, yeah, talking about lighting, why the road, there's my building's garbage.
It's not correctly depicted upon the plan is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's the first map they put up.
Okay.
They had building that says did not fit what it's actually on. Also, uh, she should, we're basically. Talking about like taxes and how
Exactly.
the bunch of money it's going to cost, but they don't even know the costs to the taxpayer of this job.
No, we, we do not.
We do know.
We do not.
We will not.
And we will not until, until such time as it comes on.
It's going to just decide the limit, in my opinion. It's going to go up and up, but how are they going to clean all that? Oh, something else is going to come up. Um, something else and then, we, we won't know. We'll just continue to tax and attack the, well, pay and things that gets funded, federally, the grants that comes from the taxpayers. And, um, and as far as so for I feel like, one, it's both through to, um, you know, if it's holding on then I'd say feel like any other obstacle are going to just leave and sell, so then they have more D E S as well. And then of course, that's immediately a price. As far as the road. I guess that's not a big deal.
Okay.
But the road will be, you know, we'll have to pay for it.
Ms. Hartley?
Uh, we're back partly of myself. Not as the town representative. I just wanted to point out, because the the Mill Pond project is people blind lands. Who wouldn't want me to stop from buying land or this board or any other board? You have the right to buy land and to put you on. But the reason why we were voting on the trash energy project was because that was a town project that was going to, we were going to supply the money out of our taxes. That's the difference. Why, and they. That's the difference why, and thank you for doing your jobs and putting in the good work. But that, that's the difference between the two projects is, this is a private project that has nothing to do with the town.
That's gonna take our money versus voluntarily giving our money to a problem someday.
Oh, there you go. All right.
I have a last question.
Yeah, I mean, I
I did one last thing, please. I just wanna thank all the people that have done a lot of math to present the facts as far as what this is gonna cost a typical taxpayer. I think companies that come in with this big project like this that's gonna increase or affect the town the way this is going to affect a small town, it's just gonna destroy a lot of people in this town. I just want, my job when I was working on the outside was that. If the math doesn't work, it's not gonna work. Just keep that in the backyard.
This point. Sir in the blue shirt?
It's titled by Cooper White. So first of all, I appreciate this conversation and your collaborations in particular. I'm sorry I forget your names, but thank you. The idea that you are bound by the rules that exist today, and essentially the time that this proposal comes in, you have to apply the rules that exist today. What process, if any, is there to adjust those for us to help you create other rules that might now be more relevant? Do we understand the impact of these new rules? Is there a process that allows it?
There is a process that allows it. This past Tuesday, we had a work session to work on, on rules and regulations and so forth. We have training stuff that we do as well. We are working on, on a proposal. We're taking the subdivision, the everything we're looking at, making adjustments to, and that's a constant ongoing procedure. Welcome to attend any one of those meetings and we're happy to do stuff. We are working on the master plan as well. I believe there will be a proposal to go before the town to get the new master plan going. And once that's happened, we need all the, all the input we can get from the community to develop the master plan, which then helps us to develop the rules and regulations even better.
And do those rules and regulations then factor into this decision? No.
No. Not this one because they're because of the time you correct. Yes.
So just to follow up on what Kendall was saying. We are, each year, we're taking sections of the zoning regulations, reviewing them, seeing if they really still address the needs of the town and so on. Those then come up for public here. So it isn't that we decide on them.
Right.
We draft them. Notices go out to the town, just why it's so important for people to come to those hearings and weigh in and help troubleshoot and make sure that we're, you know, that our draft is really getting it. That then translates into a warrant article that comes for, up for vote in the sprint. So that's the process. We do a draft, adjusting zoning regulations. Public hearings where you all need to be there. You know, I, I know it's not the most interesting way to spend a Wednesday or a Tuesday or Thursday evening, but come, weigh in, warrant article, be sure to vote.
So I'm just gonna just kind of turn it back to what's at hand, because we're getting a little everywhere right now. It's eight o'clock. A lot of us have families that we go home to, so we can just
Right, so. So. Do you have something that you wanna say about five point one or something?
No, I just wanna make sure that the private property dispute that the gentleman back there brought up is on record.
Okay, so we have, we have apparently two property disputes from two different parties.
Okay.
One being these gentlemen back there, and the other being that young lady over there. Neither, which are depicted on the site.
Actually.
We are so responsible.
Yeah.
It's fine.
I just wanted, the, the comment that you made about your property on Milk Pond Lane, we do, I get, that is something that came up, I guess, side block, so you did have your property surveyed and let us know that was, so our surveyors correspond with your surveyor, they gave us a copy of that survey. Our plans have been updated. They should have a copy of it right there if you wanna, wanna copy or they got a book to it. So we have updated our plans. I think the old surveys agreed that the property line on Milk Pond Lane was showing, we showed it the same bought. What was different was the buildings that we showed, we haven't really gone on to your property, we didn't have permission to do that, to survey the house location. So we've just taken data plus the town tax maps and the, the books available online, which is always a little bit off to show a butter's, you know, property now. So we have updated our plans to show what your survey is showing on your house. But the property line, you know, the dispute, as far as, as far as I know from our surveyor, that's just wanting to know that we have that.
Ms. Downey, is that correct?
Yeah, I do, I did, I do have, it's, it's, um, spending forever.
Right, right, the houses, but the property line itself is what, what is where.
I'll have to look at the survey.
Please come up and look at it.
Yeah, she can take that. Like the cost where we said, if another is vacated, we have no idea. So I don't know if that would like interfere with my decisions or my decisions. If that was taken into
The only thing we're discussing right now is, is your property line, is it's depicted in the correct location? Yes or no? Please, please check. Erin, you had something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to ask the board, are they legally allowed to continue with this process while our private rights are being fired? Yes.
I think it's been said a couple of times that there are certain rules and regulations that bind planning board. Certainly, some of those rules and regulations have requirements as to depict easements, they have requirements as to establish ownership of your property that you're seeking to develop, and I'll let the board discuss it further. But certainly, private property rights in development and disputes to those do occur from time to time, and sometimes those issues need to get addressed as part of the project.
But shouldn't that be addressed first before they like
Yeah, so I guess like if we're, you know, I'm hearing that, I heard from these, these from here that, our attorney, I'm sorry, I don't know who you're that the board can and should accept a proposal that has active disputes or that to be figured out later on, but I'm not sure that that's in accordance with five dot one where it says all easements need to be accounted for. So if we can't see legal access, we have grounds to deny until that's resolved. It doesn't feel like we can without
Are you referring to five point one of the site plan regulation?
Yeah, well, yes.
Okay.
So
Just for clarification.
Yeah, thank you. So until that's addressed, how are we, we, it would feel like we were, we're not making an informed decision to accept it until that's resolved.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny until that's resolved.
One, it can't be resolved.
Hold on.
Guys, but let us have a conversation.
So.
Yeah, I feel like I've been taking notes throughout the conversation, and if the ownership issue has been addressed, then I don't think we can accept it, and then, and instead, like, I think we should deny it, and then they can reapply when it's been resolved.
Okay.
You can't find the application you're speaking about right now. Was it for social?
Which is the one with the easement event? I think he was like
It's a site.
So, so
It's really both, but it's
And so we're open to the public, I mean, does any of you agree with that?
It's not open to the public.
No, I mean, us. I mean, but we can talk about it openly because
First of all, I need a second.
I'll make the second.
I have a second on, on your motion. Could you actually write your motion down for me?
Could you make that, maybe, or
I'm making a motion to deny the application. Both applications due to the unresolved property dispute issue.
Under five point one of the site plan, specifically to survey boundaries, boundary line markers, the butters, name, setback, front and rear sides, all easements, buffers, or overlay zones, water bodies, and water courses.
That's a requirement of our site plan.
Okay.
I can write it out if you like.
I have
I think I have a second.
I have a second. Do I have discussion? Do I have discussion, Linda?
So I have a question. You said earlier, remember correctly, that that dispute in your legal opinions was not grounds for denial. Would you say more about that if I was
Yeah, but I don't have the regulations in front of me. I do agree that when you're applying for site plan approval, you need to depict those sorts of things on your site plan application. But I view this as a separate private property dispute between two owners that is not relevant to the site plan review process.
Except that our implications is
And what, the way that I read those regulations again, without having them in front of me.
I could surely, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Okay, do I have further discussion on the board? Hearing no discussion, I will call the question and we'll do a roll call vote. Bethany, how you vote? Do you vote in approval of the denial of the motion?
For denial, yes.
Of the site plan?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris? Ms. Ferris?
I vote to deny.
Mr. Fitch?
I vote to deny.
Ms. Barnes?
To deny.
And myself to deny. So the site plan is denied until such time as those can be resolved. Do you have anything else that you'd like?
Hold on, guys, we haven't adjourned yet.
Yeah, we have not adjourned. Looks like Milk Pond is done.
Yeah.
Do you guys have anything else, or? Like, second? Okay.
I think I had.
So I won, won, hearing on Milk Pond? Well, that's what I told you I'd do.
Yeah, they're over it.
Sorry. So, do I have a motion?
All of your thoughts, your concerns, your feelings, and everything that's going on right now, we are still in a meeting and we'd like to be respected as such.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing then?
I still motion.
Take a second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ferr, Ms. Franz. Second by Tricia to close the public hearing on Milk Pond. All those in favor say aye. Next order of business?
That was just the first.
Oh, yeah. Shamburger. We had a little issue that came up with the, with the lot, the sub lot division that we did, that they are not on a public road or a class six road. They would entertain a motion from the board to refer to the selectmen for waiver of liability for what is known as Hickhill Road. They have a motion by Tricia, second by, by Bethany. Any discussion? All those in favor of sending the Shamburger file to the selectmen for waiver of liability, say aye. One abstention, four yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. But please, please come forward.
If people could, again, take their conversation outside.
So the issue is that it's not a, we were under the impression it was a class six road. It is not. It is not a road at all. It's, it's, it's over property.
What we tried to articulate on too, at Spender for a couple of emails, when I bought that property in two thousand and fifteen, we did some research on it. Spent some time and money on it. The road was discontinued. It was a town road. It was discontinued in nineteen twenty-six. We found, we, we have a document.
Nineteen forty is when the town could vote on it.
In nineteen forty, they found out in nineteen twenty-six it was discontinued. They again discontinued it in nineteen forty. And for some reason, they decided to do it again in nineteen seventy-two. The Ashland's like that. The Ashland's like that. So they did it three times.
Wanna be sure.
But when I, when I bought that property, that was before I bought that property, and that was a prefer of mine, so I did my homework on it. After we, we have correspondence with the board of that time, they also agreed that it was a discontinued road. A complete discontinued.
Yeah.
Not subject
So we all agree.
Okay. Being a complete discontinued road, there's definitions that come along with the discontinued road. And one of those definitions is the town has no responsibility to that road whatsoever. It's not a public access anymore. It's no longer a public right of way.
Correct.
The land itself reverts back to the owners on both sides.
Correct.
Okay, which becomes by state law, if it's needed, an ingress or egress for anybody living on that property.
That is correct.
Okay, so with that being said, we're in, I'm a hundred percent fine with any waivers. I just don't wanna sign a waiver that would also give you guys the right to ever take that road back.
No, that's not what the waiver does. The waiver says that due to, to it being not a road and, and a
It's a discontinued road.
Discontinued road. That and the length from which it is from the, from one seventy-five to the building spots.
Four hundred feet.
Yeah, and then to your house?
It's approximately nine hundred feet, and I own both sides all the way up. I own a hundred acres around.
And, and we do not plow it, we don't maintain, we have nothing to do. Understood. What this does
It's a road. You tell me it wasn't a road.
No, it is not a road.
It's a discontinued road.
It's not a road.
It's a discontinued road. There is, there is preference about a discontinued road. Statute says there is.
As you said, in nineteen twenty-six, nineteen forty, and nineteen seventy-two, was voted to discontinue.
Right, it's not a town.
So because it's not a town road, it's not maintained and everything, and due to the length of it, the selectmen would like, or the town building inspector is concerned that emergency apparatus may not be able to get to you in a timely fashion. And, and this just put, the waiver of liability puts you on notice of that. That's all it does.
We are happy with that. My concern is by signing the waiver of liability with a discontinued road, it's very clear in statute, state statute, that the town already assumes that. It already is explicit in law that's in there. Okay, that we're just being redundant. Now, with that being said, we can prove that. I don't have a problem. I have written literature and stamp
We just need something on fire with them.
We tried to give it to them, and this is where we've come to. Okay, and, and, and I believe she tried to get in two nights ago, and you said it wasn't a public meeting.
It was a work session.
But it was public, right?
It was public. I told I told her she could come in.
Did he tell you not?
I told you you couldn't speak.
And we have proof. There was another fellow with you.
No, I literally produced sheet.
No, she tried to go in. She tried to give you the documentation so we don't have to get to here. All right, let's, let's, we'll let that be by bond, all right? Our point is this, if we sign any waivers, we're being redundant here. The discontinued road is already an assumption of no services down that road. It's already there. It's clear in statute. You can look it up. It's there. There's case law on it that we looked up. It's there as early as, as, as early as two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty-one. All right, all we're saying is, we don't, he, he came in, he said, oh, you're gonna have to get a lot line adjustment. You told her two nights ago that nobody can travel down that road. We've been traveling down that road since two thousand and fifteen with correspondence from the board of that time that said it's absolutely fine to travel down that road. That is your road. That is our road. It's a private road. It's also our, butter has right to the center line. We have right. Only, she only has a couple hundred feet, right? You with me on that? So I'm not sure he's saying that we need to get lot line adjustments, we need, that we can't, that's not a right of way. It's absolutely a right of ingress and egress for that, for that lot of land up there. And we just wanna be in compliance with you, but I don't know why it turned into you can't travel down that road, you can't, you, you, we gotta put a stop. He told her to go ahead and order concrete, so she did. He, he fired off an email last night, said I'm done with this conversation. She had to call off concrete today, which cost us a couple Uh, she had to call off concrete today, which cost us a couple thousand bucks to do. He's, he said that we need to, we can, because the road goes back to the abuttes and we only own to the center of the road, we can drive down our half of the road. That's not, that's not what the law intends. The law clearly states that that road is available to us and also to our neighbors. And we don't need a written right of way. He told us we have to assign a right of way to her. She has to assign a right of way to us, and that's not the case. She doesn't use that land and she'll sign away anything. I just wanna be clear and I wanna be forthright with you guys that I think we're being redundant. I really don't wanna sign any papers because by signing papers, what that tells you guys is that it's not a discontinued road. It's a discontinued road subject to bar and change, which is not the case here. Well, it's, it's okay. You can have a opinion.
Requirement. I just wanted to clarify. This is a requirement on all subdivisions that are on a class six.
We're not on class six.
Can I finish though?
Yeah.
A class six or a private way is that the town requires a specific agreement that gets recorded that simply says the town has no liability. We're not gonna plow you. We're not gonna fix your road if it washes out. And you agree that if you can't, we can't get a fire truck down there, the town's not liable.
It's already there.
You don't understand.
But it's not recorded. This is to record it at the registry of deeds.
All towns require this.
It's recorded as a discontinued.
No, it is not.
Not the agreement.
It's not recorded.
But yet it's on file with the town.
It's not. We, we, it's on file in the, in the town.
I got another I-butt from the town that says it is.
It's, but it's not recorded at the registry of deeds.
A search of the records revealed that Hickhill Road has been discontinued by the town vote in nineteen twenty-six for one section of Hickhill Road, which is the section that we're talking about, okay? With a disconnected road, this is correspondence from the planning board by the way, the town has no ownership of the road.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And so the ownership reverts back to the abuttes of the property.
Right, we're not arguing any of that. When you go into the definition of discontinued road, all these assumptions you want us to sign comes with it.
But in this day and age, this is what legal requires us to do for anyone that puts a subdivision on a private way or a class six road.
Which I'm fine.
You're not be treating anybody, you're not being treated any different from
He told us, he told her two days ago that nobody can travel that road.
That, that's not true.
She posted it.
That is not true. There is
You, and you said to her, oh, you're a broker, a licensed broker, and you walked away and you kinda did one of them ha type of things, right?
Okay, first of all, let's get back to
Yeah, let's get back, but it's
Do you want the
No.
I'm a little just upset about it. Now, with that being said, I'll sign it, but I don't want there to be any classification of that road other than what it is.
So, so that is not within our purview. That is in the purview of the selectmen.
Which, okay, okay.
So you, you, you will go, they, they will have it something drawn up. They'll talk with you, you, your attorney, whoever you want, and then you'll hash it all out with them.
I, I, I don't know if there needs to be a hash of it. I just wanna, I don't wanna give up any rights.
You to be happy as well.
That's right. I just chief would like to
Well, the fire chief would like to make a comment.
Absolutely. Still listed as Hickhill Road by nine oh one guidelines. It cannot continue that way. That's why you had a driveway on Route one seventy-five. Now that it's been subdivided, it has to have a road name.
We're fine.
Because you got two people there and it's greater than two hundred feet.
Appreciate that.
We will definitely Be happy to that. The nine oh one established when they started because I can't get all the way through that road perfectly. Absolutely appreciate that. We, we, we agree with that. We just didn't wanna be responsible at this point. I've been living there for fifteen years. We've been traveling that road for fifteen years and all of a sudden two people are coming from the town telling us we can't run down that road. It's a little nerve wracking for us. It was said to us, okay? It was said to us. And actually, we prob- we probably have it in an email. That's why we're here tonight. Otherwise, it's not an issue.
Okay.
We just don't, we just don't know where that came from and which condition was. That's all.
Okay.
It's actually was my oversight and not realizing. I thought when I heard it was gonna be the driveway off one seventy-five, I didn't understand that it was gonna be the old Hicks Hill that was being used as the driveway.
Yeah, well, that
So this agreement should have been brought up before you even
I agree with that a hundred percent. I agree with that.
Oh, I'm just saying that you get
But we were approved.
You are
I, I assumed you guys already knew all that when we got approved.
Actually, when you're
We were approved.
When your, um, surveyor came, the class six
I watched that meeting.
Right, so class six came up in that, and that's where we all made the assumption from.
I don't recall that class six coming up in that meeting. Uh, and I'll give the minimums on that, but it's not a class six road.
We, we understand that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanna make sure it doesn't become a class six because
It's not going to be.
I'll tell you the real reason behind all this. It's because in the future, and it might be her kids, it might be my other daughter's kids. I don't want the town to ever be able to come back and say, you know what? We wanna fix this road up and we wanna let people run through the town, through Hickhill and run all the way down into town. At this point, we own both sides of both of the road and we wanna keep it private.
Yep.
That's all we're at.
Absolutely.
All right.
Sorry you put you after that.
Very good.
What's that?
Sorry, I didn't put you first in the agenda.
That's all right. I appreciate you. No, we actually enjoyed the meeting. I, I love this.
Name it after yourself and call.
Uh, so we need, from what I understand, he wrote off some stuff that we need to come up with a name for the road.
Yeah, so as, as the fire chief just told you?
That's
Nine oh one.
You, you can suggest a name, but this light one needs to approve.
That's fine. Beautiful. Now, he also said that we had to get our neighbors that has a, a portion of that road to sign off on the easement,
which, which being a discontinued road, we already have an easement through there of egress and ingress.
Yeah.
So why would we need to get her to sign off?
Depending on where, where you have it.
Yeah.
A- as, just depict it.
Okay.
Twenty, fifty feet on your side.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it was a discontinued road that runs, her boundaries run along one side of the road. My boundaries run along the other side of the road up until I own both sides of the road. And it was a town road that went up through, which reverted, we both own to the middle of the road now. We both have access and that egress and ingress. So we shouldn't have to get any written signatures or any of that.
Unless somebody that featured that she sells her land to, to drive on half the road and then they can deny him the right to use it if
It's a discontinued road.
Doesn't matter.
It, it, it is now your property and her property.
Yeah.
If she decides that she wants to put a fence up in the middle of it, she could.
Kendall, I guess that
So it protects both of you, just if you have a signed waiver, because then that goes in with the
Is this for the board or can this be?
This, this is really gonna be between you and the board of selectmen.
Okay, all right, cool.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Uh, moving on. Um. Correspondents. Those, those five of you who are going to the training.
Yep.
Please see Jane. Um, she has some additional information that she needs to take care of.
On the mail, on the seminar.
No, I checked.
Where you have the, the course that you want to attend.
Oh, no, no, he said I'm
Then you also, then you also have to sign up for the
Oh, no, can I get one of those possibly?
Because the email you have to respond to, you have to pick your, your lunch choice.
Fair enough.
And you have to, uh, let them know what seminars you wanna be a party to.
Okay.
Perfect.
Hey, when did you send that email, Erin?
I didn't send it. It came from your, directly, if you read, it came from the purple, the, they actually mailed that with a registered to you.
John, John will show it to you. Um, next thing is places in the town around the Swan River that runs through town has now been declared by the federal government as being in a flood plain. Those houses are now required to have flood insurance. So we're gonna look into and with the town manager on to the national flood insurance program and what, what it would and if it's beneficial for us to be part of that. And lastly, um, as, as we talked about earlier, there's a, we need to start working on a warrant article for the master plan. Uh, that's gonna be, it's gonna run around ten thousand dollars as a warrant article. That is all that I have and next meeting will be October second, two thousand and twenty-five. Does anyone have anything else come before us? Okay, we have a motion to shut.